I'd like to welcome everyone here to the auditorium at Science Hill High School. My name is Casey Marler and I'll serve as the moderator for our event tonight. It is a candidate forum featuring six of the eight candidates for the Board of Education for Johnson City Schools. Remember, early voting begins this week, Election Day. After all of this, hard to believe it is three weeks from today. We want to thank the League of Women Voters of Northeast Tennessee for serving as our host for tonight's event. And without further ado, I'm going to turn the mic over to our candidates. They will be introducing themselves if you want to let your friends and family know. It's currently being livestreamed on wjhl.com. Without further ado, we will let the candidates give a 30-second opening statement. Perfect. Before that, we're going to invite Gwen to the microphone and let her give a brief statement about the League of Women Voters.
My name is Gwen Medetol and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Northeast Tennessee. I first want to give thanks to our collaborators for these forums, the Johnson City Chamber of Commerce, Science Hill High School, and especially WJHL, who's helped publicize, they're livestreaming, they provided a moderator, they've really been fabulous. And I want to thank our audience who came out in the rain to become a more informed voter. You've given handouts as you came in about candidate information. That came straight from Vote 411, which is a website run by the National League. We invite candidates to put in information and answer to some questions. And so there are many more questions than what's on your little handout and different ones than what we're going to be asking tonight. Let's see. Okay. So the history is that the National League formed over 100 years ago when women got the right to vote. We have the eight counties of Upper East Tennessee. We have almost 70 members. Our mission, I love this, is empowering voters and defending democracy. I always felt a little bit like Cebu. Our vision is that we have a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate because it takes all of those. We believe in the power of women and men, men may join the league, we have a number of male members, to create a more perfect democracy. We're fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are a nonpartisan organization. That means we're not bipartisan. We don't support any candidates or any parties. We want to inform voters so that they can make the decision that matches with their values and their beliefs. We have a few guidelines for the forums and for the audience to know. This is not a debate. It's a forum where everyone gets a chance to answer the questions. Information sharing and education is our goal. We will not be taking questions from the audience. In fact, we have enough questions, we won't get through all of them with this many candidates. Discussion will follow a very structured format, which the candidates are aware of, and we expect stability and respect from both the participants and our audience. So thank you.
Once again, how about a round of applause for Gwen Medetol, the president and the League of Women Voters. And now we will meet our candidates.
My name is Kenneth Earl Greenway. I'm a lifelong resident of Johnson City. I grew up in Johnson City. I went to a school in Johnson City before the integration and after integration, graduated from Science Hill High School in 1973. Worked for the Johnson City Washington County Boys' Club, currently working for the city of Johnson City, Parks and Recreation, and run a recreation center called Carver Park. We do a lot of different things here. I work with kids and different people in the community. I want to see the school system the best it can be and do what we have to do.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan Berkeley. I am not a lifelong resident of Johnson City. I wish I had that distinction, but I'm from Dayton, Tennessee. I moved up here in 2011 to go to ETSU and fell in love with this place. I am a 31-year-old father, business owner, computer scientist. I'd like to use my technical skills and my business skills to help move our school system even more forward than they already are and to help the community.
Evening, everybody. My name is Sam Peavyjohn. I am the father of three small children, all in the Johnson City School District. I moved here nine years ago, primarily to focus on community-based solutions, community-based science for the opioid epidemic. And one of the things that we found that I've become passionate about is that early childhood education and elementary education are the two of the biggest factors in raising resilient children. They're not kind of roped into this cycle of potentially becoming addicts themselves regardless of the outcomes of their parents and generation for that. Learning that made me want to become an advocate for education and run for school board and try to work to improve early childhood education and elementary education outcomes in our
Good evening. My name is Beth Simpson. I too want to thank everyone in the audience for being here and especially those at home that are listening. I really appreciate that you've taken time out of your schedule to find out more about the candidates. It's been my privilege to serve on the Johnson City School Board for the last four years. I'm always amazed by all the things that our faculty and staff and especially our students are accomplishing. I'm a mom of four Science Hill High School graduates and one current student. I'm a former teacher and I'm a weekly volunteer in the Johnson City Schools. I am running it as an independent candidate for Johnson City School Board because I believe that kids should always come before politics.
Hello, I am Ginger Carter. For the past four years, I have served Johnson City as a school board member. I am seeking reelection because I believe in public education and what it means to our community. My daughter is currently a student here and I want her to complete her public education in Johnson City Schools. I want to ensure that our schools stay on the path to excellence while upholding our community values. I will continue to defend parental rights, make sure that our children are in a safe environment, and receive a quality education. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rick Smith. I'm a Republican candidate for the school board. I've lived in this community for 15 years. I married Allison Spear, who graduated from Science Hill here, part of her lucky spot when she was a student tonight. Hi, Mom, who's watching from home. I love this community. I want to serve and give my talents. I'm an attorney by training. I have two children that graduated K-312, that just graduated Science Hill in the last two years. I want the school system to continue to provide the same high-quality education that they receive for every child in our community. Thank you.
And those are our six candidates of the eight who will be on the ballot when you vote for school board member coming up here, whether it's early voting or on Election Day. Our candidates drew numbers before the event tonight, and that is why they are seated in the order that they are. I'll go through the questions. The first question, we'll start with the candidate closest to me. Second question, the one over. So then Herb would be the final, the third, on and on until we get to Rick, and then we'll start all over again. So without further ado, we will begin with the questions for this evening's forum. Kenneth, we begin with you. "In January 2024, the Johnson City School Board adopted a resolution opposing any legislation that would allow public tax dollars to be diverted to private schools or organizations through vouchers, and identified numerous reasons for this opposition. However, others in the state frame this topic as a matter of parental choice and indicate vouchers may continue to be an issue. What strategies do you propose Johnson City Schools adopt to address this issue? How should the school board communicate with parents, employees, the community, and state legislators about this issue?"
Well, it'll be the same. We need to talk to our state legislators about the vouchers and how to fix our school system because we've got a great school system and we don't want to disrupt it by losing our safety, our different teachers and stuff like that, by not having the funding. Because when you do that with the vouchers and everything, most of it goes into the private sector, and we need it here in our community.
So there's a few different things with vouchers that I think it's important for everybody to know. It's been proven that they actually do not give parents better choice. These private schools are able to still have stringent requirements and can kick students out at any point in time while maintaining the funds that they receive from the state. So really, what all it does is take money and choice away from especially our rural schools. As I said, I'm not from Johnson City. I'm from Dayton, Tennessee, or Ray County. About a spot on the road. But I know from what I've heard from even school board members and other teachers and admin in that area is that the voucher system would absolutely cripple it. So part of what I would like to do is to continue what the board has already done and vigorously request that the state legislature and the governor do not pass voucher laws because it really doesn't help, it only harms. So for me, it's really simple in the fact that those are tax dollars that are collected here in Johnson City. The tax dollars should stay in Johnson City. Taking tax dollars, raising Johnson City out of Johnson City to give them to other folks is essentially theft in my mind. Essentially, a lot of this money comes from sales tax, which is a regressive tax. So folks that have the least amount of money pay the most essentially of their available income into sales tax, only to have it taken away from them. That's not fair. And what that does is it leaves them with the least possible opportunities. We know that people that have the least amount of funds, least, the lowest income also are most reliant on the services, the extra services offered by the schools, whether it be lunch programs, whether that be after-school care, things like that. Those things become less available because their tax dollars are not being used. They're seeing no benefit of the fact they're paying into those taxes in the first place. It's essentially becoming... I'm sorry, my mic cut out. It's essentially becoming a sense of segregation of folks that have the ability to attend private schools and those that don't. And this is just going to continue to make that matter worse. There's a study that came out yesterday, actually, that shows that states that have had vouchers have further segregation of rich white folks going to certain schools and then everybody else attending other schools. And yet the kids that are attending other schools are going to see high test scores and the kids actually suffering the most when it comes to test scores are the kids that are attending those private schools. And the kids that are suffering the most when it comes to lack of access to programs and things like that due to less tax funds are the kids that are in the public schools. So it's a haves and haves-nots situation, and it's not something I want to see in Johnson City ever.
In case anyone who's listening tonight doesn't know what the voucher bill is, I just want to take a second and explain what it is. It's framed as a scholarship, but in a nutshell, what the voucher program does is takes taxpayer dollars and uses it to fund a child's private school education. So I think there are several ways that the school system needs to address that. First, we need to continue to have a good relationship with our legislators. We currently do have a good relationship with our local legislators. We need to continue to help them to understand the value of public schools, especially the excellent Johnson City schools that we have. I think they know this, and we need to continue to make that known. We need to help them understand how the voucher program would hinder Johnson City Schools continuing to be excellent and to provide an excellent education. Additionally, we need to continue to tell the story of public schools and our stories of success. I believe that public schools are essential to a vibrant community. They are something we should be proud of. Good public schools attract businesses and industries. They are a unifying force in our community. So we need to showcase the successes of our community, showcase our successes to our community so that they too can take on that value of public schools.
I think, you know, the simplest way that we are effective against school vouchers is to continue to make Johnson City Schools the choice for our community and public. When you're the best, the community wants to support that. You want to send your children here. And I am very proud of Johnson City Schools and the work that has been done. We offer an excellent education and have a very rich variety of extracurricular activities where all students can find their place, and we would want to continue to do that. We want to continue to uphold our community values and to continue to see the school board to be public servants to Johnson City. We do currently meet with the legislators routinely and have asked them to oppose this legislation. I know there are friends of mine in different parts of the state or in other states where the public schools are not good, and that is why some people are seeking vouchers. However, that is not the case in Johnson City. So we don't want to be punished for other areas. What we would like to do is to be the example of how public schools can be the role model across our state.
So I'll echo everything Ms. Hartman said. No surprise, I can't imagine any candidate for public education school board would support a system that would take money out of the public education system. And we're talking $144 million was what was proposed by Governor Lee for the budget for that. We have just over a million students in public education in Tennessee. $144 per student or more would go a long way to meeting other needs like feeding our children free meals in all of our elementary schools, not just the ones that qualify for that substance. It's a waste of money. The data has proven the last two years for the three systems that have school vouchers in Tennessee, they did worse than the public school students that went to those same schools in that area. In addition to all of that, consider the fact, private schools don't have public boards that are accountable to the citizens. They will receive taxpayer dollars and they can do whatever they want with those dollars. They can test students, but they don't have to answer questions like public servants of a public school board should, and that is not the way that tax dollars should be utilized, in my opinion. Thank you.
Our second question, Ryan, we'll begin with you. And the questions, as you probably realize, are on the board as well. "In what areas would you like to expand or modify the curriculum? For example, do you see a need for advanced technical training, apprenticeships, or other workforce development programs? Are there specific curriculum needs that the city schools should address? What sort of innovative program would you advocate for if given the opportunity?"
So for me, apprenticeships and other workforce development programs is definitely the way to go. I actually got a tour of Science Hill today by Kathy Hall. Thank you, Kathy, if you're here. One thing, she told me a story about a student that had... One of the reasons that the programs that the school has now, they have a wide variety of them, especially coming from where I came from. I went to a pottery area in here earlier, which is wild to think that there's pottery in high school. But one thing, a story she had told me is that the reason, one of the reasons the programs are so great was an example of a student who had thought they wanted to be a physical therapist, but they went through one of the programs here and realized, ooh, that's boring. I don't really want to do that. And that's a much cheaper way to figure out where you actually want to go in life versus figuring that out two, three, four years into college or even in trying to get into a physical therapy school. Right? So one thing that I have learned even going through college in the computer science program at ETSU is the most value that I've found outside of just the educational classes were the opportunities that I had for internships, as well as the classes that kind of brought everything together. And so I'm sure you all, if you've been to school or college and gone into the actual workforce and realized like, wow, after about three months, I've surpassed everything I learned in school and now I'm all on my own. And there's so many things that you don't expect or didn't know to expect. And so I think having programs that allow students to spend time with professionals in the field, whether that be doctors or lawyers or HVAC technicians, that would be very effective for our area. And then talking about that, I gotta stop. So there are two areas that I'm really passionate about when it comes to expansion of programming. The first is expansion of our early childhood education programs. Pre-K is absolutely the most valuable resource that we can offer our young families and our young students. We know for every dollar that we put into pre-K, the parents of those children in pre-K see $5.51 post-tax in their incomes. They're able to work the hours they need to work, they're able to have that peace of mind, their child's safe in a safe childcare environment. Is one of the cheapest interventions for the greatest good that you can do for a community. So I absolutely see the need to continue to expand our early childhood education programs. I'm a foster dad, and because my son was a foster son, he's now adopted officially, which is a very big celebration in our house. But because he was a foster son at the point of enrollment, he was able to be enrolled in the pre-K system. And it's been life-changing for us to have a son in the public education pre-K system. And we're seeing him grow in leaps and bounds, both behaviorally, he was opioid exposed, and also in his educational standards. I have another son, who is a middle son, my middle son, who did not have access to pre-K due to the COVID pandemic. And he's incredibly bright and incredibly gifted, but his educational attainment, when we measure scores and things like that, is probably behind his older sister who had access to pre-education. You can see the gap in my own family. There's a natural experiment that took place. And need for pre-education, pre-K education will absolutely grow the tax base and improve the lives of everybody that has been into those programs.
Johnson City Schools does an excellent job of teaching the state standards, and anybody who has kids in school knows that it's amazing what they learn. I mean, the things that they have to learn in biology this year are things I've never heard before. So expanding the curriculum is maybe a difficult thing to do at times because there's a lot asked of our students. Nevertheless, I think we need to make sure we are always innovating and adapting, and especially when it comes to early childhood education and reading, we need to make sure our kids are on track because we know reading is the key to all learning. Additionally, I think there are some important things that we need to address as far as CTE and apprenticeships, et cetera. Tennessee needs about 56% of their workers to be skilled workers, but right now we have about 49% of our workforce that is skilled. So schools need to work to close that gap. So certainly, we need to expand our CTE programs, and we probably really especially need to add seats to those programs. There are several programs at the high school where we just have such demand, but we can't put every kid in that class that wants to take it. Another thing that I think is really important is the skills that you need in the workforce that are a little bit outside of our curriculum. For example, some soft skills. Oftentimes, you hear employers say that students don't have the skills they need to just have the interpersonal relationships. Do they know how to write an email? One that I've been passionate about on the board is can students type? I have asked that question many times, and we've addressed that as an issue. It's surprising to me when I see adults that hunt and peck. I have a daughter in the workforce who says that about, there's four or five people in her workplace that do not know how to type. So I think addressing those skills in the workplace is really important.
Science Hill and Johnson City Schools in general really do offer such a variety of classes, curriculum, and activities. But we continually, or thanks to our central office supervisors, administrators, and teachers, the way we try to stay up-to-date and connected to what's going on and what is needed is forming partnerships with businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, and finding what are the needs. Really, one class that was birthed out of that process was, or teaching class, teaching as a profession. And so we are continuing to look for the needs of the community and in the state and beyond to update our curriculum and make changes as needed. Another discussion that's going on, obviously, cybersecurity is a really big deal locally, interstate, nationally, internationally. So we are looking already at maybe converting or transitioning one of our computer classes and updating that to a cybersecurity class. All of these things can include an internship if a student were to complete that program. And we do have several apprenticeships with local businesses, and we also, of course, have dual enrollment with some of our higher education opportunities locally. One of the things I'm very excited about is the expansion of the Introduction CTE class to both of our middle schools. So early on, they are getting exposed, and we continue to hope to develop those opportunities.
So Ginger, thank you for mentioning that Interest to Education. My older son, Logan, actually took that class, and he's got an interest in education. He's now attending Dartmouth College, but he had a chance to understand what is going into the training to be a future educator for himself. So that's a personal example where our curriculum was changed to meet the needs and interests of our students. I've gone and eaten meals prepared by our culinary arts students. They're excellent. It was a great meal. I think things like that are invaluable to teaching kids real skills. And people focus a lot of times on the programs in the high school, and they're excellent. My younger son took four years of auto shop and fixed my own Jeep with a problem that was there. It's a full auto shop. They can do things. He got certification as a mechanic coming out of high school. He's now wanting to study civil engineering because he likes to do things with his hands, and he had that opportunity here in our school. We have wonderful resources, wonderful teachers, and it's great. We need to continue that. But beyond the things that are in high school, I would like to see our curriculum expand with programs like the Nice Walker Foundation helps sponsor tutoring for after-school targeted intervention to help kids catch up that may be behind on their grade levels. Say I mentioned the challenges of our students that went through COVID, and once they fall behind, it becomes even harder to catch up. So I would like to see more resources and curriculum that's not just at the mercy of wonderful foundations that help to sponsor that, to help our students stay on their grade level.
Thank you, candidates. We will continue. Oh, sorry, Herb. Candidates?
Well, I might have to get before the undeserved, the people that need to be involved in the CTE program. A lot of kids grow up and come up and they get in trouble and maternity and different things. Nobody shows, we need a lot of mentors to help them out, to get them and steer them to right the grade. I'm talking about at a young age, you know, mentoring. Kids are so advanced, especially in the computer age and technology, but they try not to show it. They cover it up so they won't have to do any work. You gotta be working, you gotta have the work ethic to do those things. So then in after-school programs, we're putting together different after-school programs to bridge that gap where kids can go and do some things and be involved. Everybody can go to college. They can, but it takes a strong will and a lot of education to do that. But it's some alternatives to do that's going through the CTE, the K-CAP program. We've got a lot of community active people in town to help out with the mentoring.
Thank you, candidates. And now we will proceed, and Sam will be the first for this question. "Johnson City Schools is a publicly funded district with 11 schools, serving approximately 8,000 students from pre-K through 12th grade. The city has experienced significant growth over the past decade, and this growth is projected to continue. In light of this ongoing expansion, how do you propose preparing Johnson City Schools for the challenges of continued growth? Additionally, what measures would you suggest to maintain areas of excellence while addressing needs for improvement? And please provide specific examples."
This one, thank you, this is sort of excellent. So this is an excellent question. Obviously, yes, this is a place where people want to move, and this is a place where people want to raise their families, and that puts outsized pressure on our school system. And so we need to be prepared to expand our schools to meet the growing need. That means working to find locations, work on targeting the areas where seeing the most growth of our expansion of programs around elementary programs. That means hiring. Hiring is going to be a huge part of this, of course. And when I talk about hiring, I want to make sure that we continue to work to select teachers from our area, graduates from Science Hill that go off to college, want to come back here and do great things in our community, working to create a pipeline from our students through college to come back here and teach and to do the work to grow and make this place, you know, an excellent place that we continue to be. As for measures, I am unfortunately a biostatistician. I love a good measurement. I love a good evaluation product and process. So absolutely, this has to be part of it. We have to be working on evaluating the measures we think are most important. I think that would be class size, in my opinion. We know that there's an ideal class size for both efficiency within the school system as well as the individualized learning that students need. We also need to be keeping an eye on our test scores to make sure that we continue to have, you know, maintain the excellence the schools already have and continue to measure those over time. And if we start to see drops or dips or changes that indicate that some aspect of our programming is failing, we need to start and work to address that immediately in order to kind of continue the excellence as the growth also continues in itself.
Johnson City is growing, and that's not just a challenge, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity for us to expand our vision of where we can go. It's an opportunity to add new programs. Johnson City Schools does a really good job of preparing for the future. They always have a five-year plan where they're looking forward to what things they need to be doing in the future. They're currently working in the high school on a strategic plan of how to expand programs in the space that we have and what we need to do to do that. So we need to continue to keep our eye on that. One of the ways we can meet these challenges is to make sure that our teachers are well-funded. Well-funded teachers are essential to our maintaining excellence in our schools. Finally, we need to make sure that our community is aware of our needs. When we are growing, they need to know that we are growing. We need to work with legislators and the city commission and the county commission if there are needs. We need to work with legislators and the City Commission and the County Commission if there are needs and growth. We are building a new Town Acres, and that's very exciting. And that will provide an opportunity for there to be more classroom space in our elementaries.
Unfortunately, the, our Johnson City School Board has had a good working relationship with our City Commission, and we would plan on continuing to have that. Also with our local legislators, we meet with them routinely as well. As Beth said, we constantly are looking at facility improvements, looking for the future. The growth continues to be discussed with the school board. And in addition to the new Town Acres, we also reevaluate our zoning for the schools that we already have in place to make sure that we are not overcrowded where we may have space at one school. We've also expanded some of our classroom sizes at some of our elementary schools already. And really, the addition of the second middle school, I think, has been invaluable in, in many ways. So what we don't want to lose, of course, is quality. We would continue to have the same measures in place for excellence. And just because you grow doesn't mean that you would lower the standard. And the way that we would do that, obviously, with growth, we would need more educators. And we want to continue to be in the top ten in the state for pay for our teachers and recruit excellent teachers and retain our teachers. So most of our budget is personnel in Johnson City Schools. So I'm, I'm with Beth. I think it's opportunities and looking forward to the future and let that contribute into our city.
So I see a representative from our Chamber of Commerce who is very happy that Johnson City was voted one of the most exciting places to move to. Growth is, is great for our community, but it does present challenges. One of the board's primary functions is to think strategically about the future. Our board currently does that very well and needs to continue to do that with these growth challenges ahead of us. The capital improvement plan that they review annually and update for every five years is vital to making sure that we're not stuck with a bad situation that takes time to overcome. The Town Acres replacement is a school, instead of trying to expand a facility that's no longer suitable for its purpose, is an excellent example. I met with, with Dr. Simmons this week, and I was at the meeting to go over the plans for that school. It's going to go from about four hundred students to a capacity of up to seven hundred and fifty. But one of the interesting things that he told me that I didn't realize is that's a capacity based on perfect spread of all the classes being equal and utilization throughout the classrooms. And he said, what's really important for future growth is to have classrooms that can be available for targeted training or special science modules or other programs, and not every one of them used as a classroom. Something I didn't know until I went to talk to him to understand those challenges that he sees and the things he's excited to see with the expansion of Town Acres. So projects like that and having excellent people that understand those challenges are the key to being able to be prepared for growth.
Johnson City is growing, but kind of least of them, with the housing market. People are coming to Johnson City from other states, and it makes it kind of hard for us to, to take it all in at one time. But we've got great schools. We're growing with Town Acres. It's coming aboard with a new school. We're getting a lot of things done. In the, in the near future, we're going to have to look at expanding our, our schools from eleven to maybe thirteen. Especially in the high school level and the middle school, because we've got a lot of growth there. So I see that we, we need to work hard to make our schools more viable for everybody. We've got great schools.
So I am on the Small Business Advisory Council for the Johnson City Chamber. So I'm glad somebody else referenced that. I remember Bob telling me, he was the president or CEO of the Chamber. He'd said that, it was either the People Magazine or Forbes Magazine, that Johnson City was the number one city to move to last year. And I'm sure you've all experienced any time you drive on 26 or you try to buy a house. It's not fun right now. So with that, I'd like to, as many of you've already said, continue to work with the community and local officials and administration to ensure that we have a strong five-year plan. And inside of that, one area that we could use to address our needs for improvement is to ensure that while we are growing and we are building these new facilities and hiring new teachers, that we also keep in mind the preventative maintenance side of things. That's something that a lot of people don't consider. But if you've got these new shiny toys and new buildings, you need to make sure that the ones you've already got are continuing to work and to work well. So one thing that I would do is ensure that the Maintenance Facilities Team has the budget and the people and the, the equipment that they would need to adequately keep our facility running and operating efficiently.
Thank you, candidates. We will continue. Beth will be our first candidate for the next question. Student success can be measured in various ways, such as achievement test scores, graduation rates, college acceptance rates, student rental satisfaction, post-graduation employment, or the overall development of well-rounded individuals. How do you personally define and measure student success? Additionally, what strategies would you introduce to support teaching and learning approaches that optimize student success?
Obviously, the state has very specific standards on what they measure as success. But I think it's incumbent upon educators and on the school board to emphasize that success looks different for each child and each student. Success might be passing the test, but success might be just improvement. So I think the goal should always be of moving our students further down the road of excellence. What's excellent for them is what's most important. So that is, I think, what my personal definition of success is. Additionally, I think some strategies that would be helpful to put into place is to look at assessment in portfolios. Many, many of our teachers already do this, but it is a helpful way for students to see their success. When we're just looking at test scores, that's just one day, one measure of a child or a student. But a portfolio shows the different ways that they've improved. So I would really like to see us implement more of these portfolios for our students.
Well, the first thing that comes to mind when I read that question is this third-grade retention law and all the opposition that we have shared with our local legislators as not just maybe school board members, but parents of children in our school system. Yes, measuring one test one day in a child in the third grade is not going to determine the success of that child. And so all children learn differently. All children develop differently. And so we need to just make sure that we are not holding them to a standard across the board on one day in the third grade. I don't think there would probably be anyone in here that's not familiar with that and all the aches that it's caused are children, are parents, as well as are educators. One thing that I would like to do for something like that is to continue to lobby our legislators and the General Assembly to please avoid doing things like that. And hopefully, we're still working to try to reverse that third-grade retention law, make improvements, and to make suggestions. We're not really just complaining about it. We're trying to show data. We're trying to give examples. And really to remind them that the local education body at each school district knows that child best and knows how to help that child succeed. It's the teacher of that child that, that really knows how to get the best out of them. Thank you.
So success is going to be different for every child, as, as people have already mentioned up here. And the teachers do know that best. One thing to keep in mind about public education is they accept every child where they are. And every child is not in the same place on day one or the end of the year either. We have a number of students that come into our schools as we grow that English is a second language. They have more challenges to overcome to be on grade level with a language barrier. And the numbers of those students are growing. So having the capacity to teach each child and measure each child for their improvement is something that I think is important to understand what does success look like? Because some children could sleep through class all day and then answer the test. We all carry devices in our pockets today that can answer any question we can think of. So the memorization of knowledge is not even a useful skill anymore. That being said, I do think that there has to be some minimum standards for testing just to have some idea of how effective you are doing. If you don't measure anything at all, you're just guessing at what's going on. So we do have to have some standards. And the state legislature and educators that set those standards and review those standards are the experts. It is a challenge to assess what a third grader is doing, but that third-grade reading level and, and grade level is an amazing indicator for the future of how that child's going to perform. Medication adherence, lifetime earnings, they do tie back to that as a data point. So it is important to understand early when a child is struggling and to help them.
I still think about the third-grade retention, where we still got to work with our kids, tutoring, mentoring, and get them up to par where they can pass the test, the T-CAPS, and be ready to go for the next level. We need to work hard with that. We do that a lot of them in our after-school programs, but we still got a long way to go with that.
These are really fun questions. Thank you, guys. So how do I personally define and measure student success? As many have already said, every student is different. You can't teach a fish to climb a tree. But what we can do is to continue to support them, give them the resources that they need to be successful, as well as assisting teachers and other administrators with that. I know I recently talked to a couple of teachers from Johnson City Schools, and they had said, if you've ever worked in a different school system and you come here, one of the first things any teacher will tell you is you're going to work harder than you ever have at any other school system. And that shows because of the quality of our teachers as well as the pay that reflects their abilities. So one thing that I think would be effective for ensuring our students are successful is to have a four-year post-school plan, whether that be to go to college, go to technical school, move into the workforce, whatever that may be. Oftentimes, many students kind of have an idea of what you want to do, but there's so many questions you have and so many things you don't know that being able to sit down with your counselors and other mentors and figures in the school system would be really effective. And then... Yeah, I think that's good. Thanks. So I agree with a lot of things that have been said. Success is absolutely individualized. I can give an example in my own home today. My eight-year-old daughter is one point off of mastery in her checkpoint test today she took in English. My son is in the RTI reading program for extra reading help. He is two tests away from potentially being out of that program. And my youngest son got a smiley face sticker today because he kept his hands to himself. So success is individualized in my household, and success is absolutely individualized among all the students in our schools. So I think of success as, is somebody at their highest potential? Are they a well-rounded person that's ready for what they want to do next? And I think that is what we need to be shooting for when we talk about our students. They come from all walks of life, from all over, with all sorts of different skills, all sorts of advantages, disadvantages. And I am honored to be aware of the portfolio system that Beth mentioned. And I think portfolio systems should change over time among individualized students is an excellent program. We use it in colleges. We use it in all across systems. I think it's an excellent use of that kind of system in place to look at what our students are doing. And I also love the idea of a follow-up exam or a follow-up check-in. We do the same thing with graduates of the college. Why aren't we doing that with our high school students? Why are we talking a year out, two years out? What are you doing? Was it what you thought you'd be doing? Do you like what you're doing? Do you feel as though what you're doing is shifting because of something you've learned since then? I would love to see that. I'd love to see how we could use that to potentially target and tailor the programs we have at our schools to make sure we have individualized success across all our students.
Thank you, candidates. We will continue with Ginger with the next question. Johnson City School Board elections became partisan in 2022 with candidates identifying as Republican, Democrat, or Independent. Why did you choose your particular affiliation over the other? In what specific ways does or will partisan affiliation influence your approach to serving the school board?
Well, I'm in running as a Republican because I've been a lifelong Republican since I started voting. However, as I've already stated, that does not mean that I'm a robot and I don't align with all the Republican platform in the state, which would be school vouchers. So even though Governor and some other Republican leaders in our state are for that, I have opposed that from the beginning for many reasons. And it would definitely hurt Johnson City Schools, which is an excellent public school that we would hope would be the leader of how to do things correctly in the state. So I don't, I mean, I'm really Ginger Carter. I mean, I'm most influenced by my faith, not by my affiliation to any party. So yes, I'm a registered Republican, but it's really my faith basis that guides me. I believe in Jesus and have a biblical worldview, I hope. And I think it's my faith that shapes, hopefully, my life and decisions or things that I would carry with me. It's not a party affiliation. So I think our school board has worked really well together. Even though we saw our last partisan election two years ago, we continue to work together with different views for the best of Johnson City and its students.
So I'm running as a Republican candidate. That's how I've voted almost every election. I had to verify that's my voting affiliation to the satisfaction of the Republican Party. Those are the facts. My personal values align more with the Republican Party on most issues. But as Ginger said, that doesn't mean that I'm going to make decisions because Bill Lee or whoever's in the White House or anywhere else tells me how I'm supposed to think. The school board is the most local election I can consider. It's a one-issue position. It is all about education of children in that school board district. And if somebody's concerned with the police or their taxes, they can call the City Commission or they can call the Governor. They're not going to call their school board. When they talk to the school board member, it's because they've got a specific concern about something happening right there in their school. I personally don't agree with the idea that school boards should be party elections for that very reason. There, there are too many local issues that are different from what they think is going on in Nashville or a problem they're trying to solve from Nashville that doesn't apply to Johnson City or Washington DC to Johnson City. So I, I think that the concept of political party breaks down when you get to this local level. And I will commit to you that every decision I make will be based on my own investigation and understanding of facts, talking to the people that are experts that can tell me, because I'm not an educator. It's not my role to teach the classes. It's my role to help the board govern effectively.
I'm an independent. That's the way I went because I'm here for all the students. I support a certain group of students and for all the teachers, the mainstays people, everybody that's in the school system, everybody in the city. I, I just work with them and try to make things happen in the school system or in the, in the community. I work with everybody. I don't like the partisan situation. It don't work. It just makes a lot of people mad and creates a lot of other problems. But I, like I say, I'm an independent just to work with everybody.
So I'd like to echo what many of the other candidates have said in that I completely disagree with what the Republican Legislature and governorment did when they passed that bill. It's pretty clear that they weren't intending to influence elections. If you think about it, it's not hard, right? But I will say I'm running for the Democratic Party. I consider myself a bit more of a moderate. But the reason that I ran with them is that I grew up, I call it a hereditary Republican. My family was fully Republican all of my whole life, and they still are. My grandpa still bleeds Republican. But to me, the messaging and the stances and the language that the party uses on the national scale is abhorrent and disrespectful and just horrible. So that's one of the reasons I ran. But I do agree with many of them that this is a community service position, right? We're unpaid. We're taking our own personal time and funds to assist our community and ensuring that our students receive a proper education. So I'll kind of say what Rick had said, that I promise to you all that I'm not going to use politics in my, my decision-making. I am a free thinker. I make, come to my own conclusions. I do my own research. As I mentioned, I have a degree in computer science, so pretty good at using the internet to look things up. So I can make that commitment to you all if you choose to elect with the board. Gosh, I'm, I'm a proud Democrat. I'm excited to run as a Democrat. I ran as an independent last time. I firmly believe that these school board races should be non-
last time. I firmly believe that these school board races should be nonpartisan, absolutely. But I didn't make the rules. Nobody up here made the rules. The supermajority in Nashville made the rules now that these races are partisan. And unfortunately, that means there's money tied to both parties that may give you better ability to run a race where you have visibility. They give you resources that independents just don't have, and that is a shame. But that's the world that they decided we're going to live in. And so I'm going to do my best to be an absolutely independently-minded school board member. I absolutely believe that school board is a position of advocacy. I advocate for every student and every family and every teacher to maximize the benefit and to give the school district as much as we possibly can. And so I'm going to be an advocate for absolutely everyone, every teacher, every student, everybody that has felt like they've had a voice in the way our schools are run or how they've been treated, you know, in the community and anything like that. I'm here for you. I want to hear those stories individually. I want to take those and I want to learn from you, and I want to learn how to make our school district more inclusive for everybody and absolutely make this a place where everybody can grow and succeed and learn. And that makes me a Democrat.
Well, I'm running as an independent, and like everyone here, I don't think that that was a good idea to put parties into the school board election. But I chose to run as an independent. I think it's so important that we put students first. While every candidate here has, except for her, has chosen a party, I chose to not choose a party because I think it's that important that we have an independent school board. While I know all of these are very excellent candidates and want to be independent, unfortunately, we put a letter after our name. We are saying something. And so I chose to say that I'm independent and I'm thinking first of students.
Thank you, candidates. The next question will begin with Rick. What principles should guide Johnson City's policies for ensuring safety in schools? How would you evaluate the current approach of Johnson City Schools regarding school safety? Do you support maintaining current policies Johnson City Schools has adopted on arming teachers and staff, or will you propose changing the current policy? If so, how?
So safety is certainly a priority. People's children are probably their most valuable thing in their lives. So the idea that something could happen to a child for any safety reason, abduction, shooting, floods, my goodness, you know, the idea that our schools should be safe places should go without saying, but unfortunately, it's a big part of the discussion for today's. I think that our schools are doing an excellent job to evaluate safety. There's a school resource officer in every one of our schools, thanks to funding from the state to make that happen. We have more than one school resource and safety officer in our high schools. I have talked to the principal at our high school and our middle schools and three of our eight elementary schools so far. I plan to talk to the rest later this week and afterwards. And every one of them asked them, do you feel that you have the right resources and the right planning for safety? They, without question, every one of them has said yes. Now, some of them are undergoing some changes and modifications to their buildings to create safe lobbies that can control the entrance to expand on that. And that's a part of the board's job to consider those issues and use those funds for that. As far as arming teachers, my understanding is our superintendent does not intend to allow teachers to do that. I don't think it's a solution needed in this community. We have safety resource officers and recruited them and hired them to be in there. They're trained specifically for those situations. Let teachers teach.
We're doing a lot of safety issues in our level of schools to make it more safe. I don't think the teachers are going to be armed. We've got good resource officers that comb the area and make sure that kids are in a safe environment, plus monitors that take care of our facilities and everything. We have good people on board, but things could happen. We've got a lot of kids in two different places, at Liberty Bell and Science Hill every day. A lot of cars moving, shaking. Just we need to be more of a safe environment for our kids to grow up and to move along and get educated.
So one thing I'm going to do is to continue working with our local law enforcement to ensure that there's proper procedures and resource officers and other things that they've already mentioned, like ensure that the lobbies are safe, bulletproof glass, only one way of entering, things like that. But I absolutely do not support the law that was passed in arming our teachers. I'm lucky in that I've never had to be in a combat situation. And if you're in a school shooting, you're in a combat situation. You do not know, I have friends that have been in many of those, and they'll tell you, you never know how you're going to react until a bullet snaps past your head. There's the people that freeze. There's the people that run. There's the people that get scared and just start shooting bullets in every direction. We do not want that in our schools. There's no way, no reason a teacher should be trying to fight off an armed combatant while also keeping their children safe and calm. So best thing we can do is to continue working with our law enforcement resources. If you didn't know, there's actually a monthly community roundtable where they will, you can go to this lunch and ask them questions. It's a great time and it's a really effective way to learn what they do to ensure that they keep our children safe. I'm incredibly biased. Teachers are already everything to everybody that are in those schools. They, my mother was a teacher. My sister is, was a teacher. It's now a library. My brother-in-law's a teacher. My grandmother was a teacher. I taught college not very well, I quit, do this now. But teachers absolutely are already overburdened. They're asked to do too much. And to ask them to become experts in armed combat seems like a bit of a stretch to me. So I absolutely do not believe we should be arming our teachers. They're specialized as educational professionals. We should respect them as such. We have student resource officers who are professionals. We should respect them as such. I've met several, especially in elementary schools and the work that I've done. They're amazing people. And they're so much more than just like a law enforcement officer. They are a member of that school district. They are friends with the kids. They are stacking lunch trays. They're doing everything to be integrated into that school. And they're an absolute blessing to the schools that can have them. So I absolutely support continuing to fund and to expand those school resource programs. And I absolutely want to mention that nobody hears that the need for continued intervention in mental health issues. I'm a public health scientist. Prevention is cheaper and safer than any sort of intervention than all the gun. So if we can work to make sure that we're catching our students that are having mental health issues before they arrive to that of a crisis, if we can put in plans to assess and work through those issues and continue to do that throughout a student's entire career, we're going to have a lot safer schools and a lot more community-based, you know, interventions that keeps kids in school versus having crises and all these disasters that we see happening across our country.
So I think the guiding principles that a school needs to look at is there's kind of two parts to safety. There's emotional safety and there's physical safety. And we need to look at that both for our students and for our teachers. Johnson City Schools does a really great job of trying to address those issues. I am so proud over the last four years that we have added care counselors into all of our schools, which our counselors are specifically addressing mental health issues with students. They're not doing scheduling. They're there strictly for that. And they have had a huge impact on schools. I've heard a story of where there was a student who just showed up to school one day and just was absolutely withdrawn, and a care counselor was able to go in right away and address that issue and meet a need for this child. So I think that's one part of it. The other part is that you really need to look at those physical safety factors. The Science Hill has a huge campus with lots of doors, and we're always evaluating how we can make that better. And we are constantly considering. One of the things we've added this year is safety buttons in all of our schools where teachers can hold on to the button. And if they hold it down, it locks the school down, it calls the police, and they can, if there's one press, and it's going to call the administrator. But it's an amazing piece of technology. We need to constantly evaluate the things that we can do to make sure that our students are safe physically in the building, on the school bus, and emotionally.
I think Johnson City has positioned itself very uniquely in the state as having, you know, one of the first SRO programs even before it was better funded by the state. And we have to thank for that our city officials who have helped us, as well as leadership on the school board in the past that have bring that to the forefront and that we have continued that. That was one of the biggest reasons, probably I ran four years ago, was about school safety concerns. And I continue to be very, very passionate about our children having a secure environment to learn. As it has been said, we have at least one SRO at every school. So that really positions us to a less degree, as in some areas, that we don't really have to worry about arming a teacher or anything. We have an armed policeman at every school, at least one. We've made so many fiscal improvements to our campuses. We do have ongoing safety projects. Again, we do have that safety button that we implemented this year. And we also are requiring, starting in our middle schools, all students to wear student IDs at all times. We are also doing the bulletproof, I guess it's glass or the coverings. We're approving all of our foilers. And I'm just, I couldn't be prouder, really, like Dr. Greg Wallace and all of our administrators and teachers for all the safety improvements. What I'd like to do is finish a citywide plan that would look at the close proximity of our schools to some of our public areas and coincide that with the school calendar to increase school safety. I could talk about this all day, but I'm out of time.
Thank you, candidates. We'll come back to this side of the table and continue with Kenneth. How do you prioritize budget allocations within the school system? Are there specific funding needs or financial challenges that should be addressed, particularly those that directly impact educational outcomes?
Every year, we set our budget to impact what our teachers do for races and different things like that, books, all the different materials that we would need for our school, our maintenance, our different facilities, I think, to be impacted, what we can do. So we just got, we go around and prioritize what we need to do for each one of them. If it's something special that the school needs, we try to work it out through the budget and see how it works for everybody.
So I'll be straight up. I don't know anything about budgeting in the school system, but that's something that I would ensure that I quickly learn while on the job. Just like running a business, there's a lot of things you just got to figure out. And luckily, there are many other people on the board who have been there a lot longer, some of them even longer than I've been alive. And I'll be able to work with them and lean on their guidance and their experience. But one area that I feel should be addressed that actually directly impacts educational outcomes and really hasn't probably been thought about or talked about much since COVID is indoor air quality. And I'm not talking about just viral things. I'm talking about particulates as well as CO2. I'm sure many of you have been in an event or a conference center or a classroom, and it's not right after breakfast, it's not right after lunch, but you just cannot keep your eyes open. What's literally happening is your brain is not getting enough oxygen because there's a high elevation of CO2 in that room. And this goes room by room by room in any school or any building you go into. Our school system is better than many. They do have some monitors, but it's solo-based. So one initiative that I would like to try to get into the budget is monitoring systems, classroom-based, to ensure that our students are actually receiving clean air because, just like the water you drink and the food you eat, the air you breathe is required for your brain's efficiency. It's just like, it's just like air intake on a car. If you've got dirty air, you might like NASCAR, talk about it, Daytona, they're behind another car, they've got dirty air. It seriously impacts your brain. If you're in a clean room environment and you go to a dirty room environment, you get dumber instantly. I mean, seriously. So that would be one initiative that I'd like to help get on the budget. People first, always. So use the money to hire more staff wherever it's needed, increase the salaries in staff where you think it's most appropriate. Facilities second, because you can't have schools without facilities, but you absolutely can't have facilities without teachers. So make sure the teachers are well taken care of, make sure the staff are well taken care of, make sure they have the resources and people they need to do their job. And then after that, you might have heard of a big man who really challenged education, so we'll put some there, too.
As always, has already been said, obviously, our teachers are our most important resource. So we really need to prioritize students in budgeting, and that looks often like making sure we have well-funded teachers. Another priority is to make sure we need to, that we fund our support staff well, especially those who are interventionists who work with our RTI program. We need to make sure that those faculty and staff members are well-supported. Additionally, we need to think strategically about capital funding. There's a challenge, is that the school board is not a funding body. We go to our state and our city commissioners to get our funding. So that can be a challenge because we need to make sure we maintain really good relationships and they're aware of our needs. We don't always have the ability to predict what the future is going to bring as far as our funding needs are in capital, but we always need to be preparing for that. So that requires a good relationship with our legislators.
So again, we, as Johnson City Schools, we want to provide an excellent education in a safe environment. And that is number one, personnel, which is our largest budget item. It's personnel. We want to be at a level where we recruit and retain quality teachers. And I feel like we have done that very well. We also want to spend money on how do we secure our campuses and make them safe for our students and staff. And like I said, I can't be more proud of the progress that we have made even in the last four years since I've been on there, and that we want to continue to do that. So personnel and safety are two priorities for me for the budget.
$11,385. That's what we spend per student for all 7,680 students in this school system. I know that information because I talked to the amazing Leah Valley, who's the director of budgeting and financing the school system. She was gracious enough to sit down with me on more than one occasion and educate me about the school funding and the school budget, because I didn't know those things before I went and talked to her. My obligation as a board member is to understand those. ...less than Kingsport City Schools, who's very similar demographically, geographically to us. And yet, we get 10 to 12% better on all four of the state measures for school performance. So we do more with this. We have a 14 to 1 teacher-student ratio. They have 15 to 1. So we spend it better, we spend less per student and get better outcomes. That is a direct result of having talented teachers, great leadership, and a great culture that makes all that possible.
We will continue with Ryan. How do you approach supporting the mental health needs of students, faculty, and staff?
To continue to support the initiatives that have already been put in place by the board in hiring professionals to assist them in their life. Right? Life is hard for everybody. Everybody here is a father, a son, a daughter, a mother, or child who's just trying to get through life and figure it out. And especially in this day and age, there's not as much community as there may have been when many of these people were younger. And these professionals are a great way to help both our students and the staff to really deal with the challenges in their life, whether it be what's immediately the problems within their school system or outside in their homes. Life is hard, and we all need help. So I would continue to support, ensure that we have the budget to pay the people that we have now and potentially add more if as needed. Yeah. So I mentioned earlier the need for improved, always, mental health services for students. Absolutely, I believe that. And I know Johnson City Schools is an excellent job with the programs that we have in place. You could always grow and expand upon them. As for teachers, I'm a firm believer in workforce wellness, always. So finding ways to give them the resources for the things they need to do their job well, to feel satisfied in the work. So along lines of making sure that they have access So along the lines of making sure that they have access to health services on campus some days, access to any sort of specialized wraparound care that can be offered in the campus environment. But also respecting them as professionals and giving them the autonomy to do their jobs well and to teach without fear of rejection from higher-ups in the state. Protecting them and treating them like, again, the paid professionals and the experts in their field that they are and being respectful of their abilities and making sure, again, that we just absolutely take care of our teachers and our staff and treat them with the utmost respect and care whenever possible.
As I mentioned earlier, I'm really proud of our program where we added care counselors in each of our schools. The mental health for our students is exceedingly important. And I think one thing that we probably need to work on improving is making sure that our students are aware of what's available to them. I've heard several students say, "Well, I didn't know I could go see a counselor." So we constantly need to work to make sure that our students know that they have access to mental health services. And that same goes for our teachers. They need to know that they are respected, that they are cared about and cared for. And part of that is that they are paid appropriately and they're given time off, which they are. And I think we just continue to need to make sure that they're cared for by the administrators in their building, which I know they do a great job of. We have excellent teachers and they absolutely deserve our support.
Mental health, obviously, is so important to everyone at the school, students, staff, and our teachers. As has been said, the addition of a care counselor has really been invaluable. We have also partnered with Milligan University for a mental health partnership where we really are not having a turnover now in our mental health staff and that they can get to know the students. And they can get to know which student might seem sad as they enter the building or get a referral from a teacher to explore some of the options, or some of the options available. And just to really become more of a friend to them in our school system. I think for our teachers too, supporting them in every way, whether it is through their paycheck or through culture at each school. I think our superintendent has done a good job to build community, not just within our system, but to also expect administrators at each school to build community there as well in the support system. We're also very fortunate to have strong PTAs in our schools that love on our teachers and provide snacks and food, but just to give them something else a little special to live for it to. And we want to continue to support PTA and all those things that are continuing to occur in our schools every day.
So mental health is definitely a challenge. I think it was Sam earlier who said, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Or maybe that was Benjamin Franklin, well, the truth is that's the same. But it is true. I mean, mental health, does anybody remember how hard it was in high school? You were trying to figure out who you were, middle school, you were trying to figure out who you were, and you thought everybody else already had it figured out. It's stressful to be a child growing up in any era. It is even harder now in the era of social media and the lack of socialization that children undergo now. Our school board was proactive and changed the cell phone and social media policy to make sure it was not just the discretion of teachers, how those are used. It's not to be used at all in the elementary and middle schools, and it's a discretion of the teachers on other times like lunch in the high schools. I think that's a great first step. I think we should go even further. Children don't know how to socialize with each other effectively. If you go to lunch, they're trying to be on their devices or checking things. If school systems that have banned cell phones all day, they go to lunch and people talk about, we hear them talking to each other. We never had to think about that because cell phones, for most of us, didn't exist when we were in high school or middle school. But that's the generation that we have now. And those are the challenges and things that we need to look at for our students. Our faculty certainly needs to be supported and well-paid. They come for the pay, but they stay with the culture. I've been told that, and I think that's absolutely true, and I'm thankful for it.
Well-being of our students, faculty, and staff. It hit us four years ago with COVID. And it's hit us here a couple of weeks ago with the hurricane coming to our communities and tearing down a lot of things. And it affects the whole family, not only the students, faculty, and the staff. It affects everybody in our community. And we've got to work together to make it work for us and lift everybody up.
Thank you, candidates. And with that, we have entered the time where we will ask for closing statements from each of the candidates. And we will begin right here and move down the line. Kenneth, we'll start with you with your closing statement.
Okay. My name is Kenneth Herbert Reilly. I'm running for the school board from the city in Johnson City. I want to make things better in the community. I want to work with the 103 people and get kids involved in different aspects of the school system where they can get an education and go and get that good job in a community where they won't leave. A lot of people once they graduate, they move on, whether it's going to college or whatever. A lot of them never come back. We want to come back to our community because it's growing. We've got a lot of people in our community. So I want to see our community grow with the students that we have here in our city. Thank you for your support. And go vote.
Each candidate has 60 seconds. Kenneth timed it perfectly.
Again, my name is Ryan Berkeley, and I'm running for the Johnson City School Board. I'm a 31-year-old father to two boys, three-year-old, a 20-month-old boy, who have me running around like crazy. I'm a business owner and a computer scientist that graduated from ETSU. One thing I haven't got to talk about yet that I think is important in our current education system, and my closing statement is AI in schools. We all know it's here, it's not going away. And there's three key issues with that. How do we ensure our students are actually learning the material? How do we ensure our students are not cheating? And then how do we also ensure that our students will learn how to use these tools and have those tools in their toolkit? I'd like to use my computer science experience and time in the professional world to help the school board create effective policy, to adapt that policy to the constantly changing and evolving world that is technology. And another important thing too, as I mentioned, is clean air in our schools. It truly affects our children constantly. Man, words are hard. It affects our children disproportionately more than it does us. A child half my size is not going to get affected twice as bad as I would from a dirty air environment. So I hope that you will consider supporting me in my campaign for the Johnson City School Board. Thank you.
Again, I'm Sam Pettyjohn. I try to squeeze a story into 60 seconds as best I can. I moved here nine years ago. I didn't know where Johnson City was. I had been here once when I was a child and see some baby crock and things. I was a big fan, we saw it when I was a kid. My wife said, "We're moving to Johnson City to go work at ETSU." And I said, "Okay, let's go." I knew nothing about Johnson City. In the nine years I've come here, I have grown to love this place so much. This is an amazing place to raise a family. This is a beautiful part of our world that very few people know about. And I've become very active in our community. I'm a proud Tiger Cub Dem Leader. I am active going to school board meetings, I'm active on, when I go to the council meetings and speak my voice, I love to do those things. I love to partner with student organizations. I've really just grown to love this place and want to work to continue to make it a place where it's a wonderful place to raise a family. I have three small kids. I am so excited that we have found a place where they can grow and thrive and hopefully go to college or go do career technology education and stay here. And would come back here and make work to make this place even better. And that's why I'm here. And I would love your vote. Thank you.
I just want to say that it's been a privilege to be up here on this stage with so many really qualified candidates. Johnson City is blessed to have this many people that are passionate about their schools. I believe public schools are essential to a vibrant community. And our schools are truly a childhood treasure in our community. Nevertheless, there is still work to be done. We always need to innovate and improve and adapt. I look forward to supporting our teachers well. I look forward to strengthening our community and family partnerships. And I look forward to continuing to allocate our funds wisely, to use taxpayer funds wisely. As a mom, as a teacher, as a weekly volunteer in our schools, I'm passionate about the value of a good education. I love serving our community, and I look forward to helping Johnson Cities continue to raise our students to be excellent. I encourage you to go out and vote. And when you do vote, I encourage you to vote for me, Beth Simpson. I'm running as an independent candidate for Johnson City School Board because kids come before politics.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the WJHL for hosting this event. Again, I'm Ginger Carter. I'm an incumbent school board member for Johnson City Schools, seeking reelection. I do believe that school board members are a public servant. And because of that, I have held town hall meetings that with many of you one-on-one or in parent groups when important school topics would arise. If reelected, I will continue to be available to the community for discussion of important school topics. I'm running for reelection as a Johnson City School Board member because I believe in public education. My daughter is currently an eighth grader in our system, and I want her to finish here in Johnson City. I want to ensure that her school stays on the path to excellence while maintaining community values. If you don't know me, I would love to get to know you. My contact email can be currently found on the Johnson City School website under the Board of Education. I'm a believer in Jesus Christ. I'm a wife to Stacy Carter, a mother to Ava Kate, an OBGYN physician, and a current Johnson City School Board member, seeking reelection. And I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
So Casey, thank you for being our moderator. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Chamber of Commerce, Science Hill for hosting this venue, and WJHL in general. So I echo the privilege it is to be here with these great candidates. It's a privilege to be running for a position for such a great school system. I want that to continue. I believe in servant leadership. I want to make my community as great as it can be and keep it as great as it can be. I think our school systems are doing a great job. There's always room for improvement. I have an undergraduate degree in business from the University of Georgia, as well as a law degree from the University of Georgia. I have a master's in business from Milligan. I've got the education and experience and training to serve effectively on our board. But more importantly, I came through public education. My mother is a retired teacher. I am passionate about education in general. I worked with Boy Scouts in America. I'm an Eagle Scout, and I counsel scouts even after my boys that came through this school system and got an excellent education. I want that to continue for everyone else. And my vow will be to make the best decisions for our children regardless of politics, regardless of other issues. So thank you for your support. I'm Rick Smith, Republican candidate for school.
And with that, we conclude tonight's candidate forum. I want to thank each of the six candidates for taking time to share their views on several different topics. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Northeast Tennessee for your time and effort in creating this forum and allowing the WJHL to be a part of it. Science Hill for allowing us to be here, a part of your building. And remember, if you haven't already, pick up one of these Vote 411 pamphlets on your way out the door, not only for your information, but share it with your friends and relatives that are going to vote as well. Because this was an informational evening, but the most important part of this entire process is that you take the time to get out and vote. Early voting starts later on this week. Remember, we have the same forum tomorrow, but with city commission candidates. You can be a part of that here at the auditorium or the livestream here on WJHL. Thank you again for being part of the evening. Get out and vote. We hope to see you all tomorrow. And to the candidates, best of luck. Thank you for having your time.